Change that motion then. Put it in them to it. As of January one.
All right, it's five thirty, so I'll call the motion up. Call us to order. Would you care to do the roll call?
Collins.
Here.
Grannan.
Here.
Merle.
Here.
Nice.
Here.
Topliff.
Present. Right, please stand. We do have the forum, so. Your government as we gather this evening, we ask that you influence our hearts and minds so that we govern this city fairly and justly. We thank you for many blessings you've bestowed on our community. And we ask for your continued protection upon our city staff and crews. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Up first is a consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the October twentieth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting and work session. Surplus vehicles of a twenty twenty Dodge Durango. And nineteen ninety-six Honda four tracks, three hundred four by four. A Vermeer RTX five fifty. Surplus equipment of a twenty eleven case loader backhoe. A bid for fleet fuel cards, gasoline and diesel fuel. And a site plan for West Plains Bank ATM.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Is there any public input on a consent agenda? All those who favor it, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Class. Next, we have a public hearing on the FY twenty twenty-six budget. Is there anyone who cares to speak? Then we'll close our public hearing.
Right, on to resolutions, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three. A resolution of the city of West Plains, Missouri, adopting the twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty capital improvement plan.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three.
I'll second.
Hi.
Good evening. Um, so this is part of our annual budget process and in our charter, it requires council to approve a capital improvement plan. Um, this one, it cat covers our capital improvement plan, covers five years. Um, as a reminder, that first year is kind of the locked in numbers. That's the number that's actually in the budgeted. In the budget and is appropriated each year. Years twenty twenty-seven through twenty thirty, so that last four years of the plan are subject to change. So depending on what needs might come up over the next year, you'll see some changes for those, but it gives us kind of an outline of how those dollars can be spent in the future and kind of the priority level of different projects that are on the horizon for the city. Happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Is there any public input on resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three?
Really?
Oh, no. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
On to ordinances. Bill forty-eight oh seven to become ordinance forty-eight oh seven, second reading. An ordinance of the city of West Plains approving the adoption of the budget for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-six and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
Motion to approve bill forty-eight oh seven to become ordinance forty-eight oh seven, second reading.
I'll second. Aye.
Aye.
And so this is our annual appropriations for our budget. Um, this is of course, the, the final approved, if you will, at this point for the budget for this year. Um, we did not have any changes after first reading. As we discussed last month, there's a slight change which is listed in the executive summary related to some IT equipment from the proposed. But from the first reading, there have been no changes. We've not had any public comment that I'm aware of. And of course, we did not have any tonight during our public hearing.
Is there any public input for bill forty-eight oh seven to become ordinance forty-eight oh seven? Kelly.
Collins.
Yes.
Grannan.
Yes.
Merle.
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Topliff.
Yes.
Bill forty-eight oh eight to become ordinance forty-eight oh eight, second reading. An ordinance approving the adoption of the tax increment financing TIF number two budget for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-six and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
Motion to approve bill forty-eight oh eight, ordinance forty-eight oh eight, second reading.
I'll second.
This is our annual budget for the TIF, the Tax Increment Financing Fund. Um, last year, we had one of them that was like naturally reached the end of its designated time. Another one that we eliminated, so we're currently down to just one tax increment funds financing fund. So this is revenue and expense they net out because all of the money that's received in here goes to the um, capital improve or community improvement district. I will get these acronyms right. Um, that's related to this tax increment financing fund. Any questions?
Is there any public input on bill forty-eight oh eight, um, ordinance forty-eight oh eight?
Collins.
Yes.
Grannan.
Yes.
Merle.
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Topliff.
Yes.
Bill forty-eight oh nine to become ordinance forty-eight oh nine, second reading. An ordinance increasing electric rates for customers of the city of West Plains, Missouri.
Motion to approve bill forty-eight oh nine to become ordinance forty-eight oh nine, second reading.
Second.
All right, so this is an ordinance about our electric rates. We're increasing the rates five percent this year. Um, you guys may or may not recall, but during the budget last year, we had anticipated that rates this year for electric might have to go up seven percent. So I know a lot of people are a little upset about the five percent, but it's not seven. So we do what we can during the year to reduce um, the expenses that we have. Um, this year, we're also increasing a little bit and you'll see in the budget amendment, a little bit, we're increasing that um, transfer, that inter-fund transfer loan um, from the water fund to help offset some of the costs that we would need otherwise in rates. Um, so that's part of the, the change.
Erling, could you? Um. Put that five percent increase into a dollar figure.
Um, we did on the.
The house per meter.
Well, it would depend on how much people.
Sure.
Used. So I don't have it like in front of me, but the flat rate for a residence would be up by a dollar. So a dollar a month and then whatever usage they have. It depending on how much they use, that also goes up five percent.
Hazard guess.
No, I wouldn't.
Five bucks a month?
I wouldn't.
Okay, get that for the record.
Yep, yep. It's just one of those things where it's like more, depending on the square footage of the house, like all these different things factor into it. And I hate to promise people their bill's gonna go up only five dollars a month and they have a month that it goes up fifty or something depending on how much they use, so yeah. But the flat rate, the one that they can't control, it will be what it is, is one dollar a month.
Increase.
Increase. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there any public input for bill forty-eight oh nine to become ordinance forty-eight oh nine? Kelly.
Collins.
Yes.
Grannan.
Yes.
Merle.
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Topliff.
Yes.
Bill forty-eight ten to become ordinance forty-eight ten, second reading. An ordinance increasing sanitation rates for customers of the city of West Plains, Missouri.
Motion to approve bill forty-eight ten to become ordinance forty-eight ten, second reading.
I'll second.
Um, this ordinance is an increase of four percent above current rates. Again, a lot of that's just related to our overall operational increases for the year for expenses. Um, we don't have any really big projects or anything that we're planning on for this next year. We were able to save a little bit this year on some of our expenses, but four percent is still where we landed.
Is there any public input on bill forty-eight ten, come ordinance forty-eight ten? Kelly.
Collins.
Yes.
Grannan.
Yes.
Merle.
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Topliff.
Yes.
Bill forty-eight eleven to become ordinance forty-eight eleven, second reading. An ordinance approving the adoption of a fee schedule for certain city services and approvals by the city of West Plains, Missouri.
Motion to approve bill forty-eight eleven to become ordinance forty-eight eleven, second reading.
Second.
Uh, all right, so this is our city fee schedule. This is what we publish online. It has pretty much all of our fees, including our utility ones. It has all of our fees for what we charge for the majority of city services. There may be some small things here and there that we don't put on here like concession costs or things like that, but for the most part, it's all the fees that the city charges for normal services that we provide. Um, and so this year, in the first reading, we had in not clean copy is what I might call it, that had highlighted the items that were changing. It had some strike throughs. This final version has it all cleaned up, so it's the final. But it also doesn't make it very clear what's changed. So if you want to see that, that's on the pri- previous um, document. Any questions?
Is there any public input for bill forty-eight eleven to become ordinance forty-eight eleven? Kelly.
Collins.
Yes.
Grannan.
Yes.
Merle.
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Topliff.
Yes.
Bill forty-eight twelve to become ordinance forty-eight twelve, second reading. An ordinance of the city of West Plains, Missouri, amending chapter two, article two, division one, section two dash thirty-four subsection C of the city of West Plains municipal code relating to public addresses to council.
Motion to approve bill forty-eight twelve to come ordinance forty-eight twelve, second reading.
Second.
Sam, did you want to speak on this or?
Um, sure. I can do that. Um, or actually, this is forty-eight fourteen, right?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Well, gotcha, sorry. Okay, losing track, so. Yep, so this item, uh, second reading, uh, we had reviewed sections of our code just to look for improvements there. We noticed, uh, that it's, uh, this one, um, is not in line with what many other cities, uh, across the state do, so uh, we are recommending that we amend our code to allow five minutes per speaker, um, to allow sufficient speakers, uh, to, uh, to address council uh, when we meet on council meeting days, so. Um, did not get any public input, uh, since the first reading, uh, she'll Kelly shaking her head no, so.
Correct.
I have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, uh, wives. Appreciate your help.
So, uh, we have work to do on some of our ordinance, so it takes a lot to read through them and update them as we, we go along here. Is there any public input on bill forty-eight twelve to become ordinance forty-eight twelve? Kelly.
Collins.
Yes.
Grannan.
Yes.
Merle.
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Topliff.
Yes.
Starting to feel like a auctioneer looking for that.
All right, bill forty-eight thirteen, first reading. An ordinance approving the adoption of amended budgets for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty-five and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to consider bill forty-eight thirteen, first reading.
Second.
Good evening, council. This is our cleanup appropriation amendment at the end of the year. So basically what we do is we kind of gather a lot of the things that council approves throughout the year that might be over budget. Some of the things that we bring to you, we make a note in the executive summary, this will make us over budget for this line item, so if council approves it, we'll be using that extra money. Um, so that's what some of the items in this cleanup appropriation are. A lot of the other ones are grants that we didn't know we'd be getting. We have to appropriate for those. We have to add them into the budget, the revenue and the expense. Um, this year, we also got a significant donation from somebody in the community for our fire and our police department. So that's also included. I say significant, maybe some people might not think it is, but for us, it was significant, so it made it quite an impact. Um, and then we've got just other things here and there. Um, this year in the general fund, we went ahead and included our vacancy savings. So the money that we are saving out of the budget for positions that were unhired for a certain amount of time. Um, and other items like that, so we kind of went ahead and pulled some of that money back out of the budget. So for the general fund, it's actually a decrease in the amount that we're allowed to spend by the end of the year because of those vacancy savings. We went ahead and pulled them out. Um, and then of course, we've got a few other projects. We had some flood repairs that of course, we didn't have money budgeted for, so that's included in here. Um, replacing the roof at the chamber building came in a little bit higher than what we had hoped that project might cost. Um, council has already approved that, so that's in here. The equipment swap that you all approved with the, um, with Oregon County. Of course, we didn't budget for that. It was an unplanned thing, so that's in here too. Just some of those types of projects. Any questions?
Is there any public input on bill forty-eight eleven, thirteen? Thirteen. Kelly.
Collins.
Yes.
Grannan.
Yes.
Merle.
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Topliff.
Oh, yes. My fault. Sorry.
Bill forty-eight fourteen, first reading. An ordinance vacating a twenty-foot alley located between West First Street and West Second Street and further reserving a utility easement within the area to be vacated.
Motion to consider bill forty-eight fourteen, first reading.
I'll second.
Erling could do this too, if she wants. Um, good evening, uh, Planning and Zoning heard a vacate request at their November sixth meeting, uh, from the Horn family. Uh, they currently own both parcels in that block between Garfield and Missouri and first and second. And so this would just be vacating that center parcel, um, just for continued cleanup and improvement and use by them as they kind of expand the business. It does retain a utility easement, um, but it's really nothing to it. It's a clean, clear alley.
And the, the lot behind their store business building is for like storage and their PVC piping and wood, stuff, wood for heating, that kind of stuff. Is that the lot we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Works for me.
Yeah, they were talking about cleaning that area up too, some of the older storage sheds are gonna do. Really kind of.
Yeah.
Cleaning up the whole of them.
Good.
Block there, so. Okay, is there any public input on bill forty-eight fourteen?
Collins.
Yes.
Grannan.
Yes.
Merle.
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Topliff.
Yes.
Thank you. Bill forty-eight fifteen, first reading. An ordinance amending several chapters and sections of the municipal code to no longer require business licenses for most business types merely for the privilege of conducting business within the city of West Plains.
Motion to consider bill forty-eight fifteen, first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening again, everybody. Uh, this item is a follow-up to our work session that we held on business licenses, so appreciate everybody's attendance at that event. Uh, we went through a lot of information. Kelly did an excellent job presenting all of that. As a result of that work session, uh, we worked with our city attorney to draft several changes to our municipal code regarding uh, business licenses specifically to eliminate them for most business types. Um, we are going to hang on to a couple of, um, business licenses, um, mainly a liquor license, uh, for, uh, for those establishments that either sell or serve alcohol. Um, and then there are a couple of other provisions of our code, our, our taxi, uh, process, uh, to like to register taxi cab companies. We don't have that many in town. Um, but, but there are some provisions that we want to hang on to, so we're going to hang on to those for about six months or so. Um, and then at about six months mark, uh, we'll review our, these changes that are presented here, see if they're working well. Um, to see if we can, uh, if we need to undo any of what we're about to do, uh, on the next couple of meetings or keep them in place, so, um, you've heard the presentation, uh, but, uh, city attorney Stephanie Carr, uh, Kelly Mayers and I are available to answer any questions you might have.
I think I'm up with something just to make you do it. Is there any public input on bill forty-eight fifteen? It's just, uh, for streamlining this and making it easier to have a business in town and.
Yeah, we, we found that a lot of our requirements are merely duplicates of what, uh, businesses already have to do to, uh, get state licenses and things, so.
Consequences.
Rather than double up those requirements and, and needs for businesses to do the same thing twice, we're just eliminating one of those steps for them.
Kelly.
Collins.
Yes.
Grannan.
Yes.
Merle.
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Topliff.
Yes.
All right, now council action, so Sam, back to you again.
Just a couple of items for you. Uh, we're entering the holiday season, so if you are interested, we have a Christmas tree voting contest going on over at the library, so we've asked, uh, area businesses, nonprofits, if they want to, uh, you know, put up a Christmas tree, they can put it up at the library. Voting for those trees is ongoing. Uh, costs a dollar per vote. All of those proceeds go to support the library foundation. So during business hours of the library, if you want to swing on over there and, and cast your votes, you're more than welcome to. Uh, we will also have an event, an event, uh, later on in the year to, uh, to kind of celebrate the winner, so, uh, those tickets I believe are forty dollars and also available at the library if, uh, somebody wants to purchase those and attend that event. Speaking of holidays, we've got a few scheduling changes in terms of our trash recycling pickup. So, um, I'm, as well as office hours, uh, for businesses or for, uh, for, um, different civic center or city hall hours, those things will be changing, so we encourage residents to attend or check out our social media page on Facebook uh, to keep track of all of those changes. And then finally, uh, Erling was, uh, spending a lot of her time up here this evening, but, uh, in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I just wanted to, A, thank council uh, for your questions and comments during the budget process this year. And also thank our staff for all the work that they put into presenting a, a balanced budget for you this year, so. I think back to my first year here, the, uh, the first meeting I attended was also the first meeting that, uh, council then adopted the budget for the upcoming, uh, fiscal year, so. Um, the fact that we're able to present this to you, uh, six weeks, uh, before the start of the new fiscal year for final approval, I think is a testament to, uh, everybody in this room and the work that they do, so thank you. Uh, it's been a pleasure to be part of this organization, looking forward to many more years of doing so. That's all I have for you this evening.
All right, on to systems and comments. Um, each citizen will have five minutes to address council. Kathleen, are you ready?
Okay.
Just come to the podium, state your name and home address.
You may as if you can do five minutes. In a good way.
I know, it's still part of my five minutes, isn't it?
No, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kathleen.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you for everything that you have done this year. We we at the, at the festival are a big, how big, uh, massive bodies of committees that work all year long and then it's our job once a year to pull all the, all of that together and, and some way makes sense, uh, to everybody. This year, we had so many new things that were some of them things that we wanted to do, like change the day, the festival from a summer festival to fall. We had our, um, festival, uh, post-event meeting last week, so we could take input from all the people that uh, chose to come and participate in that. Most of the committees were either, uh, uh, at, what do you, there were people there from all the committee meetings at some point because they, they come in, they give their, their input through the, the, the two weeks after the festival, so. Uh, but I did bring some, if you did, if you wanted to actually see any of it, basically. They all agreed that the changes to the festival this year of having it in the fall instead of in the summer, the way we have had it for thirty years was a good idea. And then also a lot of the new things that were added this year. Um, I didn't, I just didn't hear much that they didn't want to come back next year, so. With that in mind, you know, we always start planning right after this one is over. And it's my job basically to come here and tell you that how grateful we are because um, uh, for a town our size and, and the amount of participation we get in the partnerships that come out to do this, these kinds of things are pretty, they're, they're substantial and it doesn't happen in every place and it doesn't, certainly doesn't, doesn't get recognized in every place, so. My job is to make sure that everybody comes in and, and gets a hand for everything that we do because we couldn't do it. We couldn't do it without the city. We couldn't do it without the university. We couldn't do it without all the community groups that come out and help and, uh, that's the best part of my job is to thank you, so there's anything else that you would like me to answer, I'd be happy to do that, but if not. Done?
I know I worked, uh, I worked that information desk for ships. The only thing people complained about was unfortunately, the national mule jump competition was that same weekend.
Well. Yeah, you know, not, it's nice that you brought that up because mule was the one thing that we got the most comments about, why did, why did we drop it? And then I found out that I was wrong. It wasn't in that, the, on that same day. The mules called me, well, the owners called. And he said, why are we not in this year? And I said, well, I was under the impression that you, you guys were going to be off competing somewhere else, so. Anyway, they're, they want to come back. In fact, they have, they're pleading to come back. So that's one of those things that the mules will be back. Yes, the mules will be back, they're, you know, we, we'll, we'll figure out a, a way to pay for the prizes because you know, we can't uh, grant money never can pay for, for prizes, prize money or contests or anything like that. We don't the state money, it was very specific about what we can use the state money for, so, but because the meals are so special, I mean, shoot. Uh, uh, the, they've, they've been covered nationally, uh, in other festivals, I mean, in other media, so. We will have them back and I'm glad you brought that up because then it didn't become part of my five minutes.
Right.
And, and, and the weather.
I was gonna ask that.
Because, yes, so.
How much did the rains on Saturday night just?
Killed everything afternoon, afternoon, but, uh, and the, the thing about the weather was that we knew that the weather, what killed us was not the weather, it was the weather predictions because people got scared that they were gonna get, you know, the winds and everything, and so they hunkered down and, and then we got probably about an hour of rain. It's the first rain that we've had, we'd had sixty days and it's probably the only rain that we've had since then. Uh, but it was rain, it rained about an hour. This is what a really good operation does. Those people, they knew, those, those teams came together this time better than they have ever come together before. We didn't wear them out before, you know, of this thing was done. We, we had people coming in from the, you know, the Justice Department, all these people that wanted to participate. We had a lot of really great volunteers out there. And they, they took it upon themselves, they got every canopy down and in and, and put away before a drop fell. That, it, it was, it was amazing to me. So I had all these, uh, visions, I was gonna have to take those canopies out and leave them set up in the, you know, on the grass until they dried out, which would have been another, you know, week, then I would have been out there putting them all away into their little coverlets and hauling them back into starch, but I didn't have to do that because the teams worked so well. The teams, the teams are really important and they all work together and they know what they have to do. So, and, and your city teams worked better than they, uh, were supposed to work because they delivered things that we actually didn't need because when we called off the, uh, some of the programming, we all actually didn't need the hay bales and the things that came out, but it turned out that those hay bales were the big, they were the biggest popular thing out on that lawn for the kids because the kids got to do with anything they wanted with them. It was a very popular part, yes, so. We thank you for the hay bales. We thank you for, you know, all of this stuff that came as a result of our meetings and a, and a result of the coordination. The city coordinates so well. So I'm not going to complain about the city doing too much because that, that is a just, just a name of the game with us. We, we love everything that you do. We're going to be the last people that are coming out and criticizing you.
Kevin, thank you for all your.
Appreciate you, Alex.
This festival is, uh, you know, it's part of us, part of what makes West Plains, West Plains and appreciate all the work you put into it. Appreciate all the work you put into it.
And, and I'm going to just say, um, West Plain. Always gets uh, always gets recognized outside of West Plains. More than we get recognized in West Plains, so in, in the whole course of things. When the awards are out there and the people are getting, getting uh, recognized, it is here. That that, all that stuff is happening and yes, we are very different in that way and I wanted to just tell you this because. Every person that per, that has done, has done anything for this town knows this. And it, and we, you know, we will be looking for younger people, looking for volunteers and, and that every city does this. But we have a special place here, I really think we do and. It, when the time comes for us to be recognized in any fashion, it's going to be the whole town that's recognized because. Uh, that's the way it should be. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Alright. Well. You know, it's about that time, uh, don't forget December first is the Christmas tree lighting. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend this year. Other than that, uh. No further business, may God bless, we are adjourned.
Second.